All right, we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this whole liberty and justice world.
Call the roll tonight, we'll take note that Mr. Alexander is absent tonight. And with that, we'll move on to our presentation, recognition, and awards.
We don't have a presentation this evening.
Is there any public comment? I didn't receive any forms. Announced that tonight, the Board did have a executive exec session for personnel. And with that, we'll move for approval of the minutes, our monthly Board action minutes from February 10th, 2015. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We'll also make a mo-- I move that we approve the monthly Board workshop from February 24th of 2015. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. With that, we're going to move on to receiving of the accounts for audit.
I move that we accept the high school accounts, middle school accounts, and cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $3,174,594.23 for February 2015 as presented.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the Treasuries report for February 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye. And with that, we'll move on to our report of the Superintendent.
I'd like to start with asking that you approve the administrative staff items as submitted for Mr. Jeffrey Cardwell, our new Director of Facilities that we're recommending.
So move. Motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Before the meeting tonight, the Board did hold an executive session to speak with Mr. Cardwell, our candidate for Director of Facilities, and I would have to say that I personally was blown away by his presentation, his expertise, professionalism, kind of exactly what Potts Grove needs right now, and thank the Administration for a good pick. And with that, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Welcome to Potts Grove, Mr. Cardwell.
And moving on to professional staff, I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
I want to recommend that we approve the remaining personnel items.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve 1 through 5. All those in favor?
No, we weren't allowed to have comments.
You can certainly comment.
I just wanted to say how sad I am to see the retirement of Mrs. Armstrong. She meant, she's meant a lot to my family, and I know to many other families in the district for many, many years, and she'll be sorely missed.
Thank you.
Now I'm done.
Moving on to business, I recommend that you approve the budget transfers for February 2015 as submitted.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the Administration to submit the Plan Con Part J document to PDE as presented.
So move. Second. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
I recommend that you authorize the Administration to execute an engagement letter with Herbine and Company as presented.
My only comment is going to be, we're going through this really fast, and just so people who are in the audience can keep up, if you could just explain what Herbine and Company is.
Every year, every year, we need to have our financials audited by a local accounting firm, and we've engaged Herbine and Company for the last six years. We have a good working relationship with them, they have some, always have some good recommendations they bring back to us. They're asking to extend or renew the contract for an additional three years at a $500 per year increase over what our current audit fee is.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the Administration to enter into an agreement with Terraform Engineering LLC in the amount of $13,800 as presented.
Second.
Just a comment, Dave, at your request, looked at the development area with the township, and it is in there. This is for the monuments marking the corners, and I had suggested at the last meeting that that has been my experience to be standard fare, and in fact, it was. So it's something we agreed to upfront, so it's not like I didn't want to suggest a township. We may have quarrels, but they didn't spring this one on us.
Thank you for checking that.
Just wanted to interject here, this money that is being spent, I know last time, we had had a conversation about our moratorium on capital spending, this situation's a little bit different in that we're spending this money in, to get back $100, I believe, $198,000. So that's, we're obligated, and it's money well spent. So with that, all those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the Administration to execute an agreement with Tri-County Area Federal Credit Union as presented.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a question about this one. Does this agreement, is this an exclusive agreement, or will other sponsors be possible? And then I have a follow-up depending on the answer.
The way our agreements with Market Street Sports are, and with the contracts that they have with the ultimate sponsors, are that the areas or components that are being sponsored are exclusive for that period of time. So, and it's also a case where we will only have one financial institution, one plumber, one carpenter, one physical therapist, so that there's not competition between members of the same industry. So, to answer your question, this would be the sponsorship for the auditorium, or for the gymnasium for the next three years. It will be exclusive.
How do you price a sponsorship? I mean, $20,000 sounds good, I'm not complaining, so I'm just, you know, I mean, is there a going rate to sponsor a gymnasium exclusively?
The Market Street Sports Group is, their business is identifying sponsors. So, while a bigger school district in a more affluent area may be able to get more money to sponsor their gymnasium, this is the best market value they could get for this, for this gymnasium.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Is this $20,000 each year for three years? And if you could just explain the Market Street money, how that works?
The donation, or the amount that is listed here at $20,000 is the gross amount of the contract. As part of that contract, Market Street Sports does get a commission, we get the balance, and we have to pay for maintenance of signs out of the, out of the proceeds. What's left is available to the school district, to the Board of Supervisors, or Board of Directors here, for whatever purpose they want. Traditionally, we've used it to fund things for the sports program, the music program, or, and occasionally, some other programs that we just didn't have room for in our budget. But I don't, I know your next question's going to be, how much do we have? And I don't have that number for you, so I'll get that at our next meeting. But it is supplemental funding available for the Board of Directors to do as they wish.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve payment of the invoices listed above for the construction renovation project.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
I recommend that you approve conference attendance as presented.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Moving on to discussion items. Mrs. Doyle is here from PFM to talk with us about a bond refinance.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. You saw my colleague John Frye, I believe, the last two times that we attended meetings. And today, I have before you the results from your competitive internet auction. This is step two in the plan that John shared with you earlier, and we had a very successful internet auction today to refund a series of your bonds. If you look at page one of my handout, while we're not at all-time low rates, we're still historically well below average interest rates, so that was all good news to your transaction today. On pages two through five, you'll see your credit rating report, and you continue to do a great job of maintaining your AA credit rating with a stable outlook, certainly no small feat in these challenging times, so kudos to the Board and the Administration for all the prudent decision-making that's going on. If you look at page six, you'll see a summary of the 30 different bids that we received today from six different underwriting syndicates. The winning bid came from Janie Montgomery Scott. They bid a true interest cost of just over 1.23%, and they bid five different times in order to maintain that first-place winning position. Down below, you'll see that Fulton Bank will be the paying agent, and the optional redemption date, that's the next time you would get to call these bonds back from the bondholders, would be August 15th of 2020. On page seven, you'll see a chronology of these same 30 bids, and I would just point out that there was a lot of interest today, a lot of competition. There was actually five activations of the two-minute rule, meaning that your auction was supposed to go for a 15-minute block of time, but if anybody knew, takes that winning position, and there's less than two minutes left on the clock, it automatically adds two more minutes. So you had five activations of the two-minute rules. On page eight, you'll see your Series A of 2009 bonds, which we're proposing to refund. So if you did nothing, you continue to make payments on page eight, and you were paying the rates in column three, which range from a 3% to a 3.75%. On page nine, that's just how much money we need to call those old bonds on the proposed call date of April 14th. And page 10 is the important page. You can see with the winning Janie Montgomery Scott coupons in column three, and their yields in column four, the net savings to the school district in column 11, total $89,783.72. That's about $9,700 greater than what John shared with you initially, so, you know, step one of the plan came in better than estimated, and now step two of the plan is coming in better than estimated. The school district share, again, that's net of the state's share, you can see the state's share in the box there at the bottom. And again, as always, the historic benchmark is, it makes a lot of sense to do a refunding if you can save net to the school district at least 2%, and you can see you're at 2.3% there. So that's all good news. Page 11 is the sources and uses of funds. I would just direct your attention to the middle of the page. If you accept the Janie Montgomery Scott proposal this evening, settlement would occur on April 14th, and that box labeled Yield of the Issue, that's the rate we would report to the IRS. You would effectively be refinancing these bonds at a 1.087%, so excellent, excellent interest rate. The last page is just your updated debt summary, so you can see the payments in column two on the 2009 A bonds go away, and we've added column seven to reflect the Series A of 2015 that's up for consideration this evening. In conclusion, I was very pleased with the process, very pleased with the results. I would recommend that you accept the Janie Montgomery Scott proposal, and as always, I'd like to thank the Administration. They did an excellent job on the credit rating call and helping us to pull together all the paperwork that's required to get to this point. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
The appropriate action, if you're willing to move forward, is not dissimilar to what you did a month ago. I'm now handing out the resolution authorizing the, this bond issuance. As I suggested to you last time, it would be a fair question, why am I just getting this now? Because the bidding just ended this afternoon, and you'll see, appended to the resolution are the items that Jamie just went over with you. Jamie was kind enough to steal some of my thunder, so my Cliff's Notes version of the resolution will even be a little shorter. He does authorize the transaction. The bonds will be issued in $5,000 increments. As Jamie indicated, Fulton will be the paying agent. You will name Janie. You're redeeming the 2002 bonds. It's the lower project, as I recall. Lower Potts Grove Elementary, that was the original project.
I'd have to double-check on that, I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, you know, the bond resolution indicates that it was a lower Potts Grove Elementary 2002 funding. The major items here are that you are borrowing $3,933,823.20. You are, the major issues are, you're representing that this is tax-free, that you do all the things required to make this issuance tax-free, because that's a benefit, as many of you know, to a municipal purchaser. That's the benefit, these bonds are tax-free. And you're covenanting the full faith in district of the district. In other words, you'll do whatever necessary tax-wise by pledging your taxing authority to repay the bonds. And the last important issue, and I think Jamie already indicated, is frequently people want to know what the call date is, when you call these bonds, and it's August of 2020. If you wish to move forward, this is the resolution for you to adopt and approve the bond purchase agreement with Janie and with PFM.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Thank you.
I was waiting for Diane or you to vote against it, so you wouldn't have to sign all these papers.
All those in favor? Aye.
The next discussion item is, we wanted to talk to you a little about, a little bit about digitizing or digital archiving of our student records, and I'm going to let Dave tell you a little bit about what we have. He's been working with Dr. Roberts on what the crux of the issue is, and what we've done to try to find a solution. And this was, this has been an ongoing issue that started last year, maybe, or probably before that, and Michelle and Anne tried to take the project on, and it just had so many arms, it just became very overwhelming. And with the renovations starting this summer, we really have to pull the trigger and get something done here, because we do have a situation where we do need to digitize these records. So I'll just let Dave explain that to you.
Shelley was nice in saying this has been going on for a year. This has probably been going on for six or seven years, where we've been trying to figure out a way to make this happen. Essentially, what we have is three rooms in the high school that are packed with student records for the last 50 years. We have 38 file cabinets full of small folders that need to be kept for 99 years. Some of the records need to be kept for 99 years. The concept, now that we can store all this on a hard drive somewhere, is very appealing, but where we've come up short is finding the time for bodies to be able to devote the time to pulling out the necessary records from the files and scan them into a logical format, so that it can be found later on by whomever needs to find the record. That's made even more complex by the special education records, because there are more, more and more detailed records that need to be maintained for a special-needs student after they graduate. And so those files tend to be not as many, but much thicker, with a lot of detail from their, probably their start in school in Potts Grove through their graduation. Now, not all that needs to be maintained, but we need to have somebody go through the file and pull out the essential documents prior to scanning. We've looked and looked and tried to find ways of not adding to the problem, but we've never been able to resolve the backlog. So, this year, with the advent of the construction project, and as we move into the next phase this summer, two of the rooms that are full of records will be renovated. So either we need to find a place for the 25 file cabinets that are in those two rooms, or this is an opportune time for us to start this process. What we were able to do, through some contacts that I had in the business manager world, we found a local organization that provides supplementary services to school districts. It's their sole, sole purpose, it's, the company is run by some ex-school business people. And they find people, whether they be cafeteria workers, or secretarial staff, or maintenance workers, custodians, whatever school districts need, they locate people who may have recently retired, or maybe they're on maternity, they left to raise children, they want to work a little bit, and, but they have the qualifications and background in school. They have locate, they have identified some people for us, if we're willing to contract with them. What we're, what we see this being is a three-phase project. The first stage of the project is to go through the files and separate the file, the documents that need to be retained from the ones that can be purged. Then the second phase will be actually doing the scanning and entering them into the logical format. And then the final phase is the actual shredding of the unnecessary files. Right now, we're looking at trying to find somebody to do the separation of the files. So they need to be knowledgeable of student records, they need to be knowledgeable of special education records, and these two people that they have available to us have those qualifications. We're projecting conservatively that this might take 1,000 hours of man-time to do this, because there's 40, 45 cabinets in the high school, and there's probably another 20 in the special education department that need to be gone through. Now, some of that time, if they're more efficient than we're guessing, and that is purely a guess at this point in time, because we have no basis for that calculation, it's just an estimate. If they get done doing the separation portion of the process, they can certainly start into the digitizing process once we have that, that structure in place. So what we're looking for tonight, if you're inclined to agree with us, is authorization to contract with a company named SOS for services of this type. The cost, I'm sorry, the cost is $16 an hour.
Is that per person that's doing it, or is that, no matter, if there's three people on it, it's $16 an hour, or is it $16 per individual?
It'll be, it'll be per-man hour. So if three people were working, it would be, that would be three hours.
Well, that would be potentially as much as $48,000, by my quick math, for the whole project.
I'm not expecting, when I said 1,000 hours, I'm expecting it to be 1,000 man-hours.
This is something that I actually know a little bit about, because I had the misfortune to oversee a project from 1999 to 2002, in which we digitized my company's personnel files. And I say unfortunately, because, because it was just an incredible time hog, for a variety of reasons, for some of the same reasons that you're talking about. You couldn't outsource it, because it was personnel files. The, the decisions about what to keep and what to not keep required higher-level intervention than, than the clerks who were doing the actual scanning. The software that was used was not cheap, and not easy to administer. And after three years of finally, and finally getting the personnel files scanned, and three years of having a successful digital personnel file system, the software vendor stopped supporting their product, and, and the inherent knowledge to keep the existing project left the company, and the result was, all those personnel files were essentially lost, other than somebody had the foresight to not shred them, but to send them into an archive. I have so many reservations about what you folks are thinking about doing, that I don't even know where to start. So I'll start, first of all, with the cost at this time, when we're facing an $800,000 deficit, as reservation number one. Reservation number two is additional expenses, like the software that will be used to store. And the consequences if something like what happened to us with the software happens down the road, and you've decided to shred these files that we're supposed to keep for 100 years legally. I think I'll, I'll stop just with, with those. It seems to me like a better plan would be to, to make a decision to digitize on an ongoing basis, and not create any more file space, and send the files out to storage somewhere. There's, there are services that do this, to make room for whatever needs doing, and do it in a way that, that gets them out of the way of the high school project, but doesn't necessarily do it district-wide. I think that, that would be far less expensive, far less risky, and I, for one, am against this idea. So, that's my piece.
I just want to add, I think that it would be difficult for us to just store the files, we don't have a place to store them, but moreover, sometimes we need to access those files. And the issue right now is so bad, we actually have files piled up. And the issue right now is so bad that we actually have files piled up in one of the offices where the supervisor is supposed to be, where Sylvia is currently. We have to find a place to put these things. And the secretaries that work back there, they were trying to digitize things as they go, but they're unable to keep up with that type of workload, and they just can't do it. So that's part of the problem. I don't know if Maura could explain it probably more eloquently than I because I'm not back there every day, but...
I think the other thing, too, is we really need to have those in a secure location. You know, it's not ideal the way it's being currently, the access files are being currently stored. And again, I think we're looking to do this for students who have graduated. That was the main focus, too, so that, you know, we'd still have live piles for all of our current students, so.
But if we're doing it for students who've graduated, then our need to access it on a regular basis is much lower.
I'm not sure about that part. Do you want to speak to that? How often would there be access if it's students that have already graduated, but the ones that are currently piling up, aren't they current?
Yeah, but I think that we'll be able to move some of the other files and have a little access file storage, I think, if we can get some of the ones that are graduated out.
Do we have ones that are graduated in the district office, or are those the ones that are in the high school where we have to completely gut that area? Because that's part of it. We have, like, in the high school, we have a whole two rooms, like Dave explained, but that's not going to be available for us to use or keep during the construction. Do you know that?
The special ed history records are maintained in the new server room, which, it's the current server room, too. I don't want to make it sound like it's a new facility, but where our network infrastructure exists for the brains, for the entire organization, is adjacent to probably 20 special ed filing cabinets, another 20 human resource filing cabinets, old accounting records, and a pallet or two of copy paper. So it's not a good interaction of all that paper and the technology equipment in close proximity. But that's not scheduled to be worked on until next summer, but still, if we're going to go, if we're going to go down this path, we felt that it would make sense to try and get as much of it done as possible upfront.
Well, one more point, and that is that I think your conservative estimate is too low. It's a very time-consuming process to do this. I've witnessed it myself, I've helped do it. And I have other questions, like, what about FERPA as it relates to somebody, some outside person accessing student records, especially special ed records? And while I'm at it, who in the administration is going to be making the call as to what gets saved and what gets thrown out, and how many hours is that going to take the individual, and how is it going to siphon, and how much time will be siphoned away from their regular job? Or will this be done by the third party that has this expertise? Again, it seems to me like you found a plan, and I'm not saying it's a bad one, per se, if we were flush with cash, but since we're not flush with cash, it seems to me there's alternatives that could be a lot cheaper. And before I would agree to do this, I'd want to investigate those alternatives.
So if, and I might be hearing this wrong, but what you're saying is not those 22 filing cabinets, not everything in there has to be kept?
Correct.
Okay, so this would be a first step of weeding through and deciding what needs to be kept and what can be thrown out.
Right. We have, we have a data, record retention policy with how long things are required to be maintained. So that is, that template is available. And in answer to Rick's question, the special ed supervisor, or director of pupil services, would meet with the people who are going through it and identify what the components are that we need to keep. And then those people would be responsible for going through and identifying those things. If there's a question, yes, then it would fall probably back to Dr. Roberts to make the call on whether that document is needed or not needed. How often that will occur, I can't, I can't guess at this point.
Do you have an estimate about how much of that is something that we need to keep, and how much is just extra superfluous stuff?
The graduation files for a regular ed student are not extremely thick, but you don't need to keep, even those, you don't need to keep all the papers that are in there. Special ed files can be, you know, 10 inches thick or more, depending on what the issues are that that student is faced with over his career in Potts Grove. So I'm not sure. I don't have the answer to that. Dr. Roberts may have a better idea of what components need to be kept for the special ed students.
I think it would be helpful to know, you know, what the outcome of this looks like. If we're going from 22 file cabinets and we're going to pay, you know, $16,000 and get them down to four, that seems much more manageable, even if we don't digitize at the moment to find, you know, a place for four filing cabinets. If we're going from 22 to 20, you know, it would be helpful for me to know the, how much space it's going to save, how much work is going to be at the next step, things like that, so it can kind of have a game plan for down the road.
What about the software that we'll be using? Do we already have it?
We have not identified a software to maintain the files at this point.
So we don't know how much that will cost then? And how much it'll cost in maintenance to maintain it?
We had a software product that was not meeting our needs, that we eliminated about a year and a half ago. Since that point in time, we've tried to do it just through our internal servers with our own staff identifying the records. I'm not sure if that's going to be sufficient for a project of this magnitude.
I can tell you it won't if you need to retrieve records on an as-needed basis. It just won't. You know, you're going to need to purchase something, and it's not cheap. So my suggestion is that, at the very least, before you come to us and ask us to approve something, you should bring us the total cost. So I'd like to table the discussion after everybody's done and skip a motion for this until that time.
Even if we don't buy software, at the very least, we do need to purge the files so that we're saving space, because if we leave the things in the filing cabinets by purging what we don't need, we're going to be garnering some additional space. But either way, if we don't, if we don't put these documents, if we don't digitize, then we're going to have to find a storage space.
But didn't I hear that that's, but next summer?
There's stuff in the high school right now that has to get out of there before the summer.
This summer?
This summer.
Because I heard next summer, too, so I was...
Well, that's the server room that's in the district office, but we also have a full room at the high school that's just packed full. And last year, we started having, paying some of our staff to do an hour here, an hour there, to start to purge the files, and we realized that there's no way that we were going to be able to get that done in that haphazard manner. We needed a consistent workforce that could just focus on this.
And you're saying that the archiving services that take files and store them for you are, is an inappropriate solution as an alternative?
Did we find an archiving service, Dave?
But Rick, if you don't purge anything, you're going to be paying for extra boxes at that point. So the purging should be done first before you send any boxes off-site.
How many hours do we think it'll take just to do the purge?
That's what I was projecting the 1,000 hours to be.
Hold on, I thought the, I thought the 1,000 hours was to scan. So it's way more than 48,000 or whatever the actual cost is, because the scanning time is the bigger time.
We were only bringing to you the purging time right now because of the dire need to get that stuff out of there.
Can I just ask something here? I'm just wondering what files it is we have to keep for students, because I'm remembering when my son graduated in '06, I got a notice and was able to pick his records up and sign off on them. So if the kids are graduating, do we do that, or was...
I don't have the list, Maura probably knows it by heart, but we have a list of documents, and it says what you have to keep for a regular ed student, what you have to keep for a special ed student, and there are files that you do have to keep for 99 years. Some files you don't have to keep, and you probably got a letter that said, hey, we're going to purge these if you don't come pick them up.
Because I picked up his records.
Yeah.
Okay, so let me break this. Let me see if I understand this. We're talking of this request here that's in front of us to look at this right now, we're talking just for the purging, not the transitioning over to digitizing. I understand how space is limited, especially in school buildings. I went through it, too. I have the same problem at Radnor. I have closets and closets full of files. And they could be digitized or put somewhere else, yes, or stored, like you said, Rick. My concern is, after we do this portion, and it's going to cost us a whole ton more to do the other portion, and then the software. Rick did have a good idea about getting more information on the total cost of this whole thing. I understand that this, something needs to be done now, that's what you're coming to, it's what this section of it for. But the cost now, I don't think it fits in with what we need to do where we have our deficit right now. I don't think the cost right now is a, I guess others may see it as it has to be done now, and others of us see it as, does it really have to be done now? That's, I guess that's the battling point we're looking at. I think, I like Rick's idea about coming back and visiting it, but I do understand the administration and the building people's thought that it's in their way, bottom line. It's taking away space in the serving room, it's taking away...
We have to move what we have in the high school for the construction.
I understand that. I understand that. But I just don't feel, right now, the possibility of spending, I don't know how long it takes, so I can't, I can't say 1,000 hours is high, 1,000 hours is low. That's not my, but at each person that's doing it, we're being charged $16 per man hour, and if it comes out to be that each person put in, you know, it could be up to, you know, two people, it could be up to $32,000 just for the project of getting a scan. That's my, I'm not there with that. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
So I got, what I would like, we don't have enough information, I think, to make a decision on this tonight. I would like to see a couple of things before we do move forward. It's obvious we have a space issue, we know that. I guess some more numbers that include the software that is going to be for the document management portion of it, included in what we're looking at, also what it would lead to store it off-site. So what is Iron Mountain or another service like that to keep the files there? Certainly, if it's something that we own, you know, we want to see the cost-benefit analysis, I guess, of owning the software and housing it and digitizing versus putting it together. So when we can get those things, I think we can make a better, better decision at that point.
We're going to move on to the next item, then? Dave's going to talk to you a little bit about the governor's budget proposal.
I'm passing around a summary of what we've been able to digest from the governor's budget proposal. To say that it was an ambitious budget proposal is an understatement. If this were enacted, school business officials and school boards across the state would be doing hand springs outside. And it has, it has a lot of good things in it, but like any good thing, there comes with some costs. There are some tax increases involved in the proposal. Obviously, in order to do more, you have to raise more money to do it. Some of the tax increases are designated to spread out the costs in a different manner than what they're currently being paid. So a shift from property taxes to personal income taxes or sales taxes. But I want to run through some of the additional revenue sources that the governor proposed. I want to caution you not to count on this money because the one thing that I feel comfortable in saying is that we probably won't have a budget by June 30th this year because I'm not sure that the Republican Congress is willing to take on the additional tax burden that's reflected here. So we have to be cautious. It's very optimistic information, but we have to be realists as well and try and figure out as we go through it what's more likely to happen. Some of it probably will, a lot of it may not, or may not now. But that being said, I wanted to indicate, you can follow along on your document here, and there's actually a graphical presentation behind it that you can look at. But in his, in the governor's proposal, there's an additional $400 million in basic ed funding. They've rolled back, the Ready to Learn block grant is gone, but included in the basic ed funding is the refunding of the accountability block grant, which was in place several years ago, as well as 10% contribution for school districts for charter school tuitions, and a basic, addition to basic ed funding. So this is $400 million more money than was included in the Ready to Learn block grant and the basic ed subsidy last year. In addition, there, he's proposing adding $100 million to the pre-K counts program, and that's geared towards early childhood education before the age of five. I know there's been a lot of talk about adding something here that there's just not funding for. If money is presented here, that might be something that the school district may want to consider embarking on. They're adding, he's proposing to add $100 million to special ed funding as well. The one unusual item on the budget is that the overall K-12 budget line is under budget by, under the current year budget by $400,000. And that's because he eliminated $1.16 billion that's currently budgeted for pension payments. This is, this is a big question mark that we need to find more out about, but the pension system in his plan will be funded through a restricted fund. Little bits and pieces we're garnering at this point in time is that part of that fund will be funded by some pension obligation bonds, which are bond issues that the state would take out to pay for the unfunded pension obligation, that is basically taking a soft liability, something that everybody knows is out there, but you don't have to pay it right now. And when you borrow money to pay for it, now you have a debt service schedule that you have to comply with over the next 20, 30 years, whatever. So some of it is going to be paid, mostly could be paid for that, in that fashion. And I've seen some comments that there would be a designated revenue stream, a defined revenue stream, to fund the pension obligations. And I've seen conversations that that might be a revitalized liquor store program that the profits would fund retirement. And they're also, he's also proposing elimination of some of the investment advisors that are relatively costly in the, in the investment of the retirement funds that are out there. In addition to the revenue increases, there's some charter school reforms, which are very interesting, since we're, we're feeling the brunt of so much of it right now. And essentially, what the governor's done is he's looked at what IUs that perform charter, or cyber charter school programs across the state, what they incur to educate children, and has tied all cyber charter schools to that tuition level. And so he's identified the base fee for a regular education student to be $5,950 for a charter school student. Special education students, right now, we're paying a little bit more than twice what our current rate is, our regular ed rate is. Our regular ed rate's around $12,000, $13,000, and our special ed... Our regular ed rate's around $12,000, $13,000, and our special education rate is about $26,000 for a charter school student. His recommendation is to fund the special education component based on the relative cost of the student, as set forth by the Special Education Funding Commission last year. So, for the Tier One Special Education Student, which is the lowest-cost student, which comprises 95% of the cyber school special, special needs students, he's proposing an additional $3,035 per year for that student. So, it would be about $9,000 per year if this was enacted for a special education student instead of the 26-plus thousand dollars that we're currently paying. So, obviously, a huge benefit to school districts across the state. There's also, he also incorporated a recommendation for both cyber and tradition, brick-and-mortar charter schools where, once their audit is performed, if their tuition rate exceeds their total expenditures, that all school districts that send kids to that school would get a rebate. So, what... The next component, if you look to the back of your page, is there is a proposal for property tax relief. He's proposed, the governor's proposing adding $3.8 billion for property tax relief beginning next year, 1617, not this budget year. So, that's an important thing. For Potts Grove School District, they're talking about approximately a 30% reduction in property taxes. We're not sure how that money will be distributed amongst the taxpayers, but I did do a calculation. If it is allocated in the same fashion that our current property tax relief allocation is allocated, it would mean about a $1,300 per household tax savings. That will be funded solely by increase in personal income tax and an increase in sales tax. So, it's a shift from the property owner to the wage earner, essentially, which I don't know is necessarily a bad thing. Those people who don't have personal income, say they're pension, they're a retiree living on a pension, that's not taxable for personal income tax, so they would have no increase in, they would have no increase in the income tax, and they would get whatever the allocation is for property tax. So, it does benefit the people who we hear need it most. Now, to the downside, if you will. The additional taxes comprised in this budget is the implementation of a 5% extraction tax on the Marcella shale gas, natural gas. In his presentation, he indicated that we're the only gas-producing state that doesn't have an extraction tax, and it seems that we have an asset that they need and they should pay for an asset that we have. Have a hard time arguing with that. The increase in personal income tax is a increase from 3.07% to 3.7%. It's a 0.63% increase in the tax, but that really equates to a 30%, or a 20% increase in the tax rate. And the increase in sales tax is from, proposed is from 6% to 6.6%. So, a 10% increase in the sales tax rate. However, the list of taxable purchases is also expanded. So, you know, maybe your accountant or your lawyer or maybe even your doctor might be subject to sales tax. I don't know. Some services would certainly be in there. But all the money generated from those two increases in taxes would be devoted to property tax relief. So, what does that mean for Potts Grove? If all this were to come to be, we are looking at the potential of receiving an additional $439,000 in basic education funding, $241,000 in special education funding, bringing us to a total of $681,000 of additional revenues. If we consider participating in the pre-K counts, we'd have some more revenue, but we'd also have some more expenses. So, that's revenue neutral, most likely. And the anticipated savings from the changes proposed for the charter, cyber charter school tuition plan that was proposed would yield another $507,000 to Potts Grove. So, like I said, this could be a tremendous shot in the arm for our district and probably for every district across the state, but I'm not sure what the likelihood of it passing in the form that it currently is at this point. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, or if not, we'll come back with more information when more information becomes available.
I have a couple of questions and, actually, one question and just a couple of comments about this, because I studied this before tonight. And the one thing I missed is this reduction in the pension revenue or the pension payments. Dave, do you think that this is just another scheme to underfund the pensions even more than they've been underfunded for the last 20, 30 years, whatever it is?
I don't think so. I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of people who want to see pension reform, change the way the pension is designed, and while I don't, I won't want to say that's a bad concept, what I can say is it's not going to save us money. Every model I've seen to date with the conversion of the new employees to a 401K-type plan, which seems to be the most popular concept out there, it ends up costing more for the next 20 years. And I really have a hard time supporting a program that's going to not pay a dividend for 20 years. And the reason that it costs more is because those new employees coming into the system are necessary to pay for those that are retiring. If you don't have the funding coming in from the bottom, then you have to, you have an increasing liability for the existing workforce, and you still have to pay for the new workforce. So, you're adding to the net outflow for the next 20 years. But to answer your question, I think what I heard him say is that they have a bill, they have to pay a bill. I just think by pulling it out of the general fund, they're trying to isolate and have a revenue stream that's dedicated to it rather than having it be subject to the annual legislative process.
Okay. So, one other quick question and then the comment. So, this year, if this were to pass, and I realize that the if is monumental, 439 plus 241 plus 681...
The total is 681.
Oh, the total?
The total there's two is 681.
681 plus 507 then?
Yeah.
So, the total for Potts Grove would be $1,087,000 approximately, if I do my math correctly, which would go a long way to salving our $875,000 deficit if it happened. I just, so that leads me to the comment. The comment is that, what's interesting when you talk to people about this, how much they already misunderstand what's going on here. What's going on here is a shift of the burden from our, the people in our community who are least able to handle the costs of funding our schools, particularly our seniors who are on fixed incomes, and shifting that money to people who are actually earning wages and buying things. But even those people get a huge savings in their property taxes as a result of this plan. So, that shift for most people actually ends up in a reduction in their overall tax costs. I'm astounded that, well, I'm not astounded, I'm just disappointed that the Republicans are already proclaiming this dead-on arrival and that they've come out against this plan because a community like Potts Grove could so benefit from this. This would be the difference between our being uncompetitive in our local real estate market, for example, and being competitive again. 30% savings on our taxes, according to this plan. Everybody should be calling your representatives, Mr. Rafferty and Mr. Quigley, and letting them know that they expect them to support this plan vigorously because we need this. Now, I'm done with my comment.
I had a question. Dave, and I know this is all, because we're not all in Harrisburg, so, you know, we can't really say. How much of this do you think is realistic, having seen budget proposals and going back and forth, year after year after year? Where do you think that we're most likely to end up? And I know it's going to be a really late one whenever we finally get it.
Yeah. I wouldn't be surprised if they don't have a budget passed before we come back to school next year. I just think this is going to, this was a statement when he made this presentation. It's the first step in a multi-year phase-in that he wants to do. Whether you agree with it or not, it was a bold statement. He didn't say, "I want a little bit of an increase." He was doing a Chip Kelly here, you know? Don't know if it's right, but it's big. So...
I think you're being unfair to Mr. Wolf.
But even if you look at the last four years with a Republican governor and a Republican legislature, we were up to the, we were up to the end and the governor didn't get his proposals. I think we'll get some more money, whether that's $100,000 or $500,000, I can't say at this point in time. It's going to be a very interesting process to watch, and, you know, we'll get more information as we get closer, but I don't see us getting less than what we have now. And I do expect to get, see some positive movement at this time because I don't see how you can go from this presentation to nothing. So...
And when do we have to enact our budget? When do we have to vote?
Our final budget has to be voted on by June 30th. So, we're going to, if my expectation is correct, then we're going to be doing it with a more educated guess than we have now, but still guessing what we think might happen.
Actually, Rick, what I was writing down on my paper here, reading through this, just wanted to put another voice onto what you were saying. We do have a Republican delegation from this region that represents us in Harrisburg, and I just want to encourage everybody on the board that all of our representatives should know our names this go-around, and the community to reach out to our elected representatives because we need every dollar here. Realistic or unrealistic, to say that you represent us and not trying to get these, this money that's available to us to do what's right for our community, not for the state. We need you to represent us. So, my growing list, one of the things that we were sold on during redistricting in the last election was, instead of having just one representative in Harrisburg, that we would have multiple representatives to represent us on one issue. So, just going all the way down the list here, Congressman Ryan Crossello, Representative Tom Quigley, Representative Marcy Topol, Senator Mench is also our representative, Senator Rafferty, and Senator Tim Hennessy. And even though they don't directly represent us, they represent this region and can lend a helping hand from our neighbors in Pottstown, who also have the same issues that we have as far as budgetary concerns. So, when you do your carbon copies, send it out to everybody. Make sure that they know who we are and that we need every dollar here. We need to rattle the cages here a little bit.
By chance, can we list that somewhere for our publics? So, the names and how they can contact them? Because you have the list.
If you give me the list, I will post it on our website and I'll put it in highlights anywhere.
Label it "our friends." Our friends, Tom, Marcy, our friends. Okay.
Yes, it's very important.
Thank you.
I think it might also be helpful for people who have never written to their congressman before, maybe have a sample of suggestions of what you might say, of course, in your own words. They don't want a thousand that say the same thing, but, you know, a lot of people, I think, are intimidated to write a letter to their congressman because they don't really know what to say. So, maybe a sample letter, put this in your own words, but this is a good thing. Very respectful, very, you know, kind, but also urging them to take action.
I'll write a draft and then send it to whomever in the administration would like to tone down the annoyance. But no, I can do, I can do a good enough job that I think that'll serve as a model, but obviously, second or third or fourth sets of eyes would be fine. So, I'll take that.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave. Very nice job. Moving on to our next item, we need to do a nomination for the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. Not to discredit Rick in any way, but our district is up currently as are 12 other districts for a three-year term seeking a candidate. And so, at this time, I'm asking you to decide who you would like to be your representative. I know Mr. Vinaud has served the district well in that capacity.
Actually, I would like to recommend Rick for the position because you've done a great job for the three years, and I recommended that for you three years ago. So, if you're willing, I think you represent us well.
I'm willing.
You're lucky.
I've probably lost my wife forever, but yes.
Thank you.
On that note, Rick has done a great job representing the district at the intermediate unit, and I would like for him to stay on. It's a lot of hours, travel time, but one thing I want to say to Rick is we appreciate what he does, going to the meetings, participating, and also updating, keeping us up to date when things are happening. So, I'll second that as long as Rick doesn't get too upset with us. All right? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Rick.
I think Rick has to fill this out. And the last item, I'd just like to remind you that we're going to be doing the dedication to the high school stage on March 20th. It's a Friday evening at 7:00, preceding the musical for The Sound of Music, and we'll be dedicating the stage to Mr. Kelly. And board members are invited to attend, and if you are planning to attend, please let me know, let Lori know so that she can count you. Thank you.
I have one other item I'd like to add to our discussion items, and it has to do with what Mr. Romilius was saying to us two weeks ago. Not to use the same terminology he may have used, we're saying we were possibly dumbing down our secondary and middle school students by changing the grading scale to 10 points instead of seven, but I would say, use the terminology, we're making it less challenging for the students in a way that in today's world, what we need to do to our students is not to make things less challenging for them, but more challenging. When they get out in their real life, they're going to face challenges. To not expose them to challenges today in the school district, we're not serving them properly. So, that, making that statement, I want to propose and make a motion that we now retain the existing seven-point scale as it is. And I'm hoping I can have another board member second that motion.
I surely will second that.
So that, making that statement, I want to propose and make a motion that we now retain the existing seven-point scale as it is. And I'm hoping I can have another board member second that motion.
I surely will second that.
We have a motion to second. We'll, we'll open it up for discussion.
Seventy-plus percent of our community members, during a survey, indicated that they were in favor of changing from the seven-point scale to ten-point scale. The, the notion that it's making it less competitive is fallacious. The fact is that there are, that the top school districts in Pennsylvania have ten-point scales, and nobody is complaining about their, not, them not challenging their students enough. It's a, it's, the, the, I will add that during the time that we were in the seven-point scale, that was supposedly making it more competitive, Potts Grove went from number fifty-something to number three-hundred-something. The idea that we would go back on this, a pledge that we made to the community, will be a disaster for this community, and I make a motion to table for more discussion.
Rick, I'd like to add that, I understand what you're saying, but also, I know, I've known many graduates, from students that my kids went to school with, and even students of board members that sit here with us. Not once have I ever heard of a graduate saying they had a problem getting into a college because of our seven-point scale. And in fact, I've known many that have gone to very excellent schools without having a problem. So to say that that's going to help them by changing, I disagree.
Just, just to put us in order here, first thing, Dave, okay, I appreciate where you put the, the motion, and got a second, so we are having a discussion, but if they're on a motion to table, there's actually not a discussion. So, we have a motion to second, and we have a, a motion to table, and is there a second to table the motion?
I'll second to table, simply because, oh, sorry.
Then there's those, if you second it, then we're not, we're not talking about it anymore.
Oh, okay, so...
I mean, I'm the villain here, as you will.
Right.
Robert's rules says on a motion to table, there is no discussion. You vote on the motion to table, if it passes, it'll be tabled to the next legislative session. If it fails, then you're back to the underlying motion.
Would...
Was there a second to Dave's motion?
So if we, yeah, there was.
There was a second to your motion. Is there a second to the motion to table?
I just, I had a question, because if...
Is there a second to table the motion?
I had a question about the procedure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, if, if we were to table it, when would we have the discussion on it?
You can bring it up, it's up, you don't have to discuss it ever. It can be brought up again at the next legislative session, which is the next publicly advertised meeting, which could be your work session, your committee work sessions, or at this meeting next month.
Okay.
I would point out that Mr. Alexander is not here, and we are not at a full board complement, and, and that...
Again, there is...
Though there's no discussion, but I said it anyway.
I second the motion to table. I second the motion to table.
So, sorry, how do we...
Now, you're going to vote on the motion to table. If that passes, we're done for it this evening, and you can raise it at the next meeting. If it does not pass, we go back to the underlying motion. You'll have discussion under or vote on that.
Okay, would it, sorry, just because I don't know, would it be put on the agenda for next time? Or, sorry, I don't know the...
Whoever sets the agenda, the president of that...
If we table, it will be a part of the agenda, agenda.
Okay.
We're voting on the motion to table. Dave, you can call the roll.
Ms. Galian?
If we vote yes, that is, we're voting yes to discuss it...
Your table. You're, you're stopping it, you're tabling it for the night, that's what you're voting on.
Okay.
Yes to table, no to not table.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Rubenowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Kofelt? Ms. Cherico?
Yes.
Ms. Grimm?
No.
Mr. Faulkner?
No.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Motion table. Okay, and we're going to hear a report from our board student representative.
Hi, everyone. I just want to continue from where I left off in, let's see, when was I here last? January. To talk about the student and staff efforts towards addressing and dealing with the cyberbullying issues in our district. We've continued to brainstorm ideas about how to get students involved in this process. And there was even a play that was written and performed completely by students that was put on in our school to raise awareness for bullying. Secondly, I would just like to, again, bring up the idea that myself and my mentor, Mr. Drenzo, had for more student representatives for the school board. I think that it will allow for a greater breadth in coverage and a greater perspective, or at least someone who can kind of sit next to me now, so that they can learn more about the process before it comes June, and they don't really have a model. Currently, students are enrolling for the AP tests. These are very expensive tests, and I don't know if it makes any difference to say it, but they're eighty dollars a test, unless you receive a free or reduced lunch. In that case, they're fifteen dollars. Because of this, a lot of students are opting for dual credit through Montco, but the problem is that colleges are really picky about accepting credits. So, I don't know if there'd be any way we could do a fundraiser to maybe alleviate the cost of these tests for students. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing it out there. I know that we tabled the discussion about the grade skill change, I don't know if I can say anything.
Please do.
Okay. I did a very informal survey about it, it just in one of my classrooms, I kind of did a quick tally. The overwhelming amount of students supported the ten-point scale, but considering that this is a really informal survey, before the next meeting, I'm going to do a mass survey to see how the students feel about that, so that that could be taken into consideration. Again, students are working on the musical, and it's going to be The Sound of Music, so that is going to be the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first of March, and it's going to be at seven o'clock. And finally, another project that is being undertaken by students is an Easter egg hunt at the Althouse Arboretum, which is on Gilbert's Full Road in Upper Potts Grove. And the Spark the Wave Club is currently working on organizing this, and Spark the Wave is a nonprofit, like, volunteer organization. So that's going to be March twenty-eighth, it's going to be an Easter egg hunt along the trail, so you can bring your kids, or nieces and nephews, and support that, because it's going to be a lot of hard work, so... Yeah, sure, if you want, anybody. Thank you. I actually don't have, I can look it up, but I will see if I can put the flyer, just like, on the district website for people to come look at. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Claus? Any new business?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One, because we had two snow days, two additional snow days last week, I would like the board to consider amending the calendar such that the students' ending would be June, Friday, June the twelfth. And that would make the twelfth, the eleventh, and the tenth the three half-days, because we end on three half-days. And that would give them a hundred and eighty days, which is required by school code, with the appropriate enough amount of hours to meet the requirement. In addition to that, I've been working with the teachers' union, and they've agreed to make, make up their last day, actually, on April the second, which is currently listed as an Easter holiday for the district. That would allow the students to have their Easter holiday. It wouldn't affect the students whatsoever, but the teachers would be coming in and have a professional development day on the second. We already have a day scheduled, I believe, on the first, so they would just come on the first and the second, and then they would have their Easter holiday the Friday through the Monday with the students, but students would still have their extended Easter holiday. So that, that's a recommendation I have. And secondly, you know, people are asking me about the graduation date, and typically we wait until April to ensure that we have exhausted our possibility for snow days. I did ask Bobby Oxenford to calculate the number of hours that we had at this point, to, to see if we could go ahead and, and secure a date. And I'm very confident that even if we should have multiple snow days, which, please, I hope we don't, we do have the appropriate amount of hours to hold graduation on Friday, June twelfth. And that's typically, we've, we've, in the past, we've held graduation on Thursday evenings. Last year, we moved it to a Friday evening, because we received some feedback that parents like to have guests in from out of town, and that would allow for an extended weekend. That seemed to work out okay. Dr. Ziegler talked with Mr. Schuster, the senior class representative, to see if that was still the feeling and what he was hearing, and they've agreed that, you know, the twelfth seems like it would be an appropriate date, so if you would be inclined to identify that graduation date, I feel comfortable that we would be meeting our requirement for hours, and we could go ahead and, and make that announcement. Oops.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar and to approve the graduation date.
I just have one quick question. What would be the last date for the teachers?
The last day for the teachers would be the same date as the students', June twelfth.
The twelfth, so everybody ends on the twelfth. Perfect.
And I want to confirm that the spring break for the students wouldn't be reduced at all.
Correct.
My son asked me to ask that question.
It would stay as it's currently, it's currently in the calendar.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Want to graduate on a Friday? Sound good? All right, all those in favor? Aye. opposed? Any other new business?
I just wanted to point out, and it's actually in our budget, or in our board packet, but that we have a sophomore in the high school, Diane DeLobio, and she tried out and made the PMA, PMEA All-State Chorus. And this is actually a really major thing in the music ward, in the music world. It's a great honor. She's a sophomore, we're expecting great things from her, and it's, it's a great honor to have her in Potts Grove. She's a great talent, and so I just wanted to say congratulations to Diane.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Any other new business? Do we have any previous, previous questions? With that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.